All right, we will call our elongated summer retreat slash work session to order. We have a pretty packed agenda today. We'll be getting updates from academic affairs. We'll look at some data, talk about our favorite subject, our board norms and protocols, get a chance to do some more in-depth review of especially program update and some more data associated with that. We have some follow-up items that we may want to talk about from our training that we had in Richmond, including in that want to just go over again the board committee assignments as well as hopefully have a final conversation that we can turn over some of the recommendations for the educational planning committee over to Dr. Boone and let them get rolling with that. And if, I would just think if others come along later that we think can add value, then we can just pass it along. But I don't want to hold the administration up on that any longer. And then if there are any other items that board wants to discuss. I know Ms. Wagner is out of town today, so she won't be joining us. And I'm sure Reverend Haywood will be joining us soon. Is anything agenda-wise that anyone feel is missing? Or is everybody okay with the agendas we have it right now? So with that said, we're going to go ahead and proceed, and we will turn things over to Dr. Boone.
Good afternoon, Mr. Jordan, members of the school board, ladies and gentlemen. We know it's approaching time to open school again, when we can start talking about last year's preliminary data, SOL data. And that's what we have prepared for the board this afternoon. At the end of the presentation, I'll go ahead and preempt that last slide, but at the end of the presentation, there's additional information on the public release dates of certain information. Our next board meeting is August 16th. On August 15th, the state will be making aggregate and some of the data available. Accreditation ratings will be released the mid, middle of September. So we're going to talk about what we're seeing in very broad contexts based on preliminary data. And you will see preliminary throughout the presentation. You will hear us use preliminary throughout the presentation because they aren't final until the state releases them. And so everything we say today is subject to change, but we're like the old Ivory soap commercial, about ninety-nine and three-quarters percent sure that that's where we'll be. And so with that, I'm going to ask Dr. Rogers to lead us off, and he and I and members of the team will be sharing in this to wrap.
So I think we have plenty of time today. So if it's okay, if we have questions or comments or discussion as we go along a few slides at a time, if that works for you all.
Sure, we can gauge and see how we're making progress.
All right.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Boone. Good afternoon, Chairman Jordan, school board members. This afternoon, as Dr. Boone shared, I will be providing you with a preliminary update on where we are as it relates to our SOL results for the 2016-17 school year and in accordance to the improved student achievement goal number one.
I'm not interrupting him already, but it was something I forgot to say. I promise I'm not doing this to you, Dr. Rogers. But you will begin to see on our various presentations going forward, the connection between the school board accountability plan and the report that is being presented, such that again, we can begin to link those aspects. So this particular one, when he just said it was reminder that this is school board goal one, and various data points in this are connected to the accountability plan in that area. So that's just what you'll start seeing from us in presentations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Boone. All right. So to recap what we've done this year with regards to SOL testing, we have tested or administered well over seventy-five thousand tests as of June 23rd of this past school year. And those tests were comprised of online assessments as well as paper pencil assessment. And if you recall in subsequent, in previous meetings, we've also talked about the addition of what's referred to as TEI items on assessments. And this year, those TEI assessments comprised of, made up approximately fifteen percent of the tested items on each test. And those TEI items, if you remember, can ask kids to drag and drop and do some matching and do some more tactile responses than they have had to do in previous years. We did process all of our alternative assessment collections with both VGLA, which is the Virginia Grade Level Assessment, and VAP assessments as well. And new this year, we assessed our math students in grades four and five with the computer adaptive testing. And if you remember, Dr. Bailey shared what computer adaptive testing was. It's a new methodology of testing administered to students that allows them a more customized approach to demonstrate what they know and understand. For example, if a student is given a question and they know the answer to it, they are given an easier question to answer that still measures the same objective that was given the first time. And if they do answer the question correctly, they're given a subsequent question that's a little more difficult. So it gauges their ability level and it allows them to demonstrate mastery at a different level. The drawback, sorry drawback, the difference from the computer adaptive testing that was not in previous tests is that students are not allowed to go back. So they must answer the question to show whether they know it or not. So the computer adaptive testing was also administered in reading in grades three, four, and five. Last year, in grade three math, we experienced the computer adaptive Let's look a little bit at our data. And again, this is preliminary data. And I do have to celebrate some of our achievement in literacy across the board. We did a phenomenal job, I think, in a year's given time. As you will see, all of our assessment data is over seventy percent. And of course, we know we have to have seventy-five in English reading and writing. But we're at seventy-four percent in English reading and writing across grade levels three through eight. And our intercourse testing, seventy-nine percent in history, still doing well there. In science, seventy-four percent, math, seventy-two percent, and writing, seventy-three percent. So we'll talk a little bit more about that in detail from a holistic perspective as it relates to our district and high school, middle school, and elementary school. In a subsequent meeting, we'll talk a little bit more about school by school data. But for today, we'll focus on big picture, high-level data. If you look at the graph that's shown there, you will see a pattern over a period of six years. And I just want to make special note to them, that green bar particularly in the area of English and or writing, that denotes the end of the assessed objectives. And we started a new trend in 2012 and 13, a new trend line. So that's why you see the dip that's there. But as you can see, as you move up in years after 2012, we showed a steadily, steady incline in the area of English reading and writing. In math, we saw a slight decline, slight. In history, same thing. And in science, a slight decline as well as the district. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in detail by level in a minute. But I did want to direct attention and create some drama around the English reading and writing because I'm extremely proud of the work that the team has done as well as our school teams. So preliminary data results for our elementary schools, as you can see, we did show that the increase in reading and math and history, and we saw the decline in science. And again, we're extremely proud of the areas that we improved in in English reading and in literacy because that was one of our main focuses of FOKI this year. And in math, slight decline, same thing holds true for history. In science, I think that came as a surprise for all of us. And I'll just kind of leave it at that. And that is an area that we've been hot and heavy on focusing on, planning and being very strategic with how that looks for next year. But what I can share with you is that we did take a hard, fast look at alignment and curriculum instruction and assessment, particularly at the elementary level. But pretty much it was across the board in elementary. And when we take a look at where our students were in high school, and what we found was a plethora of things that could be attributed to the alignment between curriculum, instruction, and assessment, particularly at the elementary level. What we did find is that you have to do science. Science is something that can't be taught in isolation, and we can't borrow from one content area and give to the other and sacrifice one content area to improve in another. So we took a hard, fast look at our curriculum. We have some holes that we have got to fix yesterday. So I wouldn't stand before you at this podium and say that we don't have some areas that we need to improve on in the area of science. However, I do think what we've discovered is that it's low-hanging fruit, and that collectively together, it's an approach that we can certainly adjust. And again, we have to do science. We don't want to make excuses about novice teachers and substitutes and monitoring, that kind of thing. It's a collective effort that involves all of us. I think in conversations with principals over these last couple of weeks, they're disappointed, quite, very much so, especially after having seen so much gain in the area of literacy. So if you're reading well, how come we're not doing well in science? We should be, one should match the other. And having been a former science teacher, I can certainly understand the concern that exists with the area of science. But I think we'll certainly get there.
And I think again, when we look at the relative declines, look at it in a relative term, because we aren't seeing a twenty-point decline, twenty percentage point decline. But we're seeing that our, what had been our annual target toward improvement, we didn't reach that. But I think it's also important to note that we're still above where we were in the 2012-13 year when we started the assessments on the new standards.
Absolutely.
So again, what does the progress look like? We didn't gain as we had anticipated, but we also didn't fall off the cliff.
Absolutely. And then also to your point, Dr. Boone, I do want to point out that what we saw when we looked at individual schools, we saw that those schools who followed the prescriptive model of science and dedicated the time to science either maintained or saw growth in science. So it wasn't a complete wash, as Dr. Boone shared. It's a systemic issue that we need to address holistically, just as we did with the literacy.
Ms. Basin.
And I know the Department of Education put out a new version of the TestNAV eight, the new test, testing delivery system. Do you think that that had any impact on, because I think they added math, history, and science this year, and it's interesting that some of the declines could be attributed possibly? I don't know, that's just a question.
Dr. Bailey may be able to contribute a little bit more to that. But anecdotally, I know that there, you know, when you have a new system, there's automatically a learning curve that you have-
Right.
-that comes along with that. So you hear different things about the TestNAV and the timeframe with which we receive TestNAV, because if I'm not mistaken, it, we didn't have it early, early. It came a little later. And then just the manner in which that is and us getting accustomed to it and allowing students to be accustomed to it. So it may have, I don't want to say definitively yes or no.
Yeah.
All right, Gabriel.
Thank you. Dr. Rogers, so I hear what you're saying about there are some low-hanging fruit curriculum-wise, and there are some areas that we need to brush up on. From, from a staffing perspective, was there anything that you all gleaned from reviewing the staffing over the course of the last year that could have contributed to this?
Yes. And one of which is, you know, it's no secret that we have a teacher shortage nationally. That's no secret. And whereas when I started teaching some years ago, the shortage was in math, science, and special education, now the shortage is in elementary ed. And it's a challenge to find teachers. And I'm sure Mr. Phillips can attest to that in the area of elementary education. So in instances where we saw that there were substitutes in key areas, particularly in the SOL testing areas, that is a challenge. But that's not one that's easily overcome to fill. It is one that we can address. If we know we have this issue, how do we approach it from a systemic, strategic standpoint to address? When we do have instances where you have a long-term substitute, how can we support them to make sure that they're able to fill in those gaps and not fall between the cracks?
A lot of times in districts with long-term subs, we forget to include them in the professional development when we know they're going to be there long-term. And so we have to be more intentional about making sure that teachers are connected with that. Because we certainly look for long-term subs that have a great skill set, great backgrounds, and how they can support it. So we just need to get them connected to the professional development around what's, what's happening. So. And just a commercial for NPS, we have a job fair on Saturday morning at Crossroads Elementary School, so.
There you go.
Absolutely.
So when it comes to science, were we truly teaching the correct curriculum?
Yes. Now, two years ago, and I learned that, and once we got data back just prior to my getting here, the third grade curriculum is a third grade curriculum, the fifth grade curriculum, SOL assess curriculum in fourth and fifth grade. And the year before I got here, there were components that were removed from the fifth grade curriculum that reviewed skills in the fourth grade curriculum, light and sound, oceans. There were two others that escaped me that we had put back into curriculum to make sure that those skills are reviewed in fifth grade to shore that up. Now, again, it didn't happen across the board. It was in specific schools where we saw the decline. But nevertheless, when we look at the alignment between curriculum and instruction and assessment, there were review holes in the fifth grade curriculum that we've patched back up in preparation for the 2017-18 school year.
And I think also, Dr. Rogers alluded to it earlier, is that you have to do science. And, you know, for many years, there had been this school of thought, well, we can teach science and social studies through the use of nonfiction literature. And that gets you the content, but it doesn't get you the hands-on practical piece. And as we look at the, the future trends within state assessments, it's, it's more problem-based, it's more activity involved. And so if our students are going to be successful beyond just knowing vocabulary, but understanding the relevance of the vocabulary and the connections, we have to make sure that each and every school is having a dedicated science instructional period, and that the associated hands-on labs and activities are also part of that. Because that's what we, we began to see as some of the, the gap that emerged in, particularly at the elementary level.
Basin.
So as part of the doing science, are you starting to build your vision in each school, what is needed from a budgetary standpoint to build that capacity to do more science in the classroom?
Oh, yeah. That's always the case, looking at Ms. Britton back there. But the, the science kits, the labs things that are available, we can see any number of requests that principals have made on the end of last school year and through the summer for additional lab support. We see that act, that proactive stance happening with our principals. So, and again, how we tweak our professional development, both for the principals as well as the teachers, is going to be where we close that gap. But truthfully, and you all have heard me say this before, when we started looking at some by-school results, we're going to see some evidence of where the scores as low as they are are clearly a result of not having taught science. There's, there's no other way that I can frame it-
Right.
...except science was not taught with any fidelity or any consistency or any intensive time put toward it.
I was going to drill down on that.
You're not going to make me violate the state's preliminary, but go right ahead.
I'm not trying to. Look, state works for us.
But they hold my license.
Oh.
Superintendent's not a book of license.
Yes, ma'am. But just in terms of, so it's a couple of things that I've heard you all say. One, what was taught and what may not have been taught. So I have a question about, you know, our monitoring and what we're going to do differently this year than what we've did last year. And in the other question, Dr. Rogers, I thought I heard you suggest that at some schools, it may have been a time issue. And so my question related to that is, you know, Dr. Boone, as we talk about not being obsessed with teaching to the test. But is it, in some schools, are we finding that we gave so much focus in one area that we didn't make enough time in another area? And if so, what do we do differently? Or what can the board provide, if anything, supports so that we don't find, you know, so we look at this year's and we say we have great progress in a lot of areas. We see a drop in science, and then we go drill in science, and then we see we get drops in other areas because we don't have that holistic approach.
It's that balance, it's that balance in the four core. And the fact that all four count, all four are critically important for readiness for the next grade level. And therefore, when we, it's easier to see science, history, and social studies in a middle school and high school schedule, because the way in which the master schedule is outlined. Obviously, right off the bat, we will be looking much closer at elementary school master schedules-
Yes.
-and what does the science period look like? What does that science instructional block look like? And, and also having the conversations among and between principals and central office for those schools that did not experience declines, or they continued on a very positive pathway, then what were they doing that also best practices that, that we can pay attention to and share?
Absolutely. The schedule is the driver of how you allocate your time. And then that coupled with how you plan for the time that you've allocated collaboratively and purposefully. And I think one of the, the things that we have a plan for, and Ms. Britton and her team have done a phenomenal job with drafting a comprehensive plan for how they address the difference, deficiencies next year, and we'll continue to refine that. But it's how do you navigate the idea of embedding literacy within the context of science so that it's not taught in isolation and still do science? And sometimes educators, teachers have a hard time distinguishing the difference that it's okay to teach a skill in reading at the same time allowing a student to understand the difference between an acid and a base during a hands-on activity. So it's a professional development issue, and it's also a training issue. And it's a shift that has to come towards some, not all, but some, with scheduling is.
But is it fair to say, based upon what we've discussed, that there are some small set of outliers, that the science performance was so far below expectation that it impacted the overall score?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It certainly, every school's results impact the, the district aggregate results. That's true. And so we have some extreme, some, some deep concerns about science in a few places.
Yeah. All right, Gabriel.
And along the same lines-
That weren't there the previous year.
That's right.
Right.
Well, yeah.
Right.
So I understand moving forward, we're going to be on top of it. But in review of this year also, when the benchmark assessments were coming back or the CFAs, was there anything done at that point in time or a flag raised? And then an intervention made to say, you know, maybe we need to carve out some time for science? Or in going forward, will you guys be looking a little bit more critically at that and then be on top of it when those results come back to make on-the-spot adjustments?
Yes. That's a double-edged sword, if you will, in the gist of looking at what assessments we could reduce or pull back because of the outcry, we have too many assessments-
Right.
-and allowing individual schools some autonomy and flexibility. I think you've heard us use the term bounded autonomy. We have to tighten up the bounded autonomy next year with regards to science. And not that it was awful, but in pockets, as we've shared, you have some outliers that had some effect on the overall outcome. And I think it's something that not only we realize here at CAD, but also individual schools. And they are working feverishly to address how we monitor and align for the next school year.
And to your, the other portion of your question, what were the flags? We certainly saw individual schools that were struggling on the DBAs. But Ms. Britton, is any, come on up, and you add voice. You all know Ms. Adrian Britton, who's the science coordinator.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much, Dr. Boone, the school board members. So the process is that as we review assessment data at the district level, we then identify where support is needed. We have a strategic visitation, if you will, outline for our schools based on their needs. When there are surprises based on assessment data, we'll then adjust our visitations in those buildings, increase that visitation. So as we go in, we're there in planning with teachers, designing lessons at that time, co-teaching, modeling lessons. But unfortunately, as been shared, we may present that lesson, but then, then there's a gap, and that science time is then broken. And it's not continuous, and not a systemic program in the, for the building.
And so that follow-through, the follow-up and the follow-through is also part of that support system. But that's why I wanted Ms. Britton to be able to share how they already deploy the system of support with schools and how those midterm, mid-course adjustments are made based on quarterly data and other indicators.
Continue.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Britton.
One of the things that I want to direct your attention to as we continue to have these data conversations throughout the course of the school year is that the state is shifting of all-or-nothing focus to more of a growth model focus, change over time, which is typically what we've been measuring anyway and what we'd like to see. So I did want to direct your attention to change over time in the context of, I want to celebrate literacy. If you, and the only reason why it's highlighted yellow is because the green doesn't show well against the green. But if you look at how we performed this year, seventy-nine percent, fifth grade, English reading, science, sixty-five percent, a significant decline from the previous year, seventy-four percent, English reading, fourth grade up from sixty-eight percent, and then sixty-eight percent, English reading in grade three. What I really like to direct your attention to is cohort, watching cohorts from the previous grade. So if you look at students in grade four, last year, sixty-eight percent of them met the benchmark, whereas this year, seventy-nine percent. So that's an eleven percentage point increase from the previous year if you take the cohort as a whole. And a similar experience held true for those students who were in grade three last year, sixty-four percent of them met the benchmark, whereas this year, this past school year, seventy-four percent, which represents a ten percentage point increase as, if you look at them as a cohort. So we are seeing some significant growth in terms of student achievement as it relates to reading. And we're looking forward to transferring that knowledge that they have in reading to the other content areas, particularly in the area of science. As we look at our middle school cohort, we saw similar gains in reading and writing, math, history, a slight decline. And the graph shows a skew version, it dipped by one percentage point, if I'm not mistaken. And then in science, we saw no decline. So middle school, they worked hard this year, hard. They had lots of support. They were very receptive to the support that we offered, as well as outside assistance from our district improvement partner and others. So create a little bit of drama. In all four areas, we saw improvement in history, put the little red circle because we did experience a slight decline, it's negligible, by one percentage point. And again, I want to direct your attention to cohort improvement, particularly in the area of reading. Last year, seventh grade students were at about seventy-one percent. We didn't see the increase per cohort, but if you look at the previous year's student performance, there, that's, for me, suggests that there's some improvement in pedagogy from the teachers who are delivering instruction. And if you look at the student cohort for grade six the previous year, some significant gain with that cohort from sixty-four percent to seventy-seven percent this past school Our intercourse results are similar in the area of literacy, reading and writing. We saw improvements there. Math, we saw a decline. History saw a decline, and science, we saw a decline as well. History saw a decline and science, we saw a decline as well. While we're extremely excited about the literacy performance, math, we anticipated that because of our realignment with how we, um, schedule students in the area of math. We talked about that a lot last year. Same thing holds true for history. This year, we had, uh, all of our on-grade level ninth grade students taking world geography, which is a course that is designed to help them be proficient and successful in subsequent history courses. And I'll share that data in a minute. And in science, we saw some decline in some specific content areas and I'll share that with you in a minute as well. Any questions about this?
I, I wanna state again, even though we're using the term decline, one percentage point in grade eight, social studies doesn't, well, I'm, I'm still on the so, middle school, but same thing there. And I guess in, as we look at, um, statistical, they are not statistically significant with that one point. It's certainly something that we need to follow and one year doesn't create a trend, but wanna again, just be very transparent that we didn't grow as anticipated, but we certainly didn't lose significant ground.
Dr. Robinson.
Did I miss it, but why do we not have the math preliminary scores for middle school?
It must be the version that's online here because the paper one and my online one is like your online one, so.
You said, I'm sorry.
The paper version does have it.
Can't see that far.
What, okay.
That's why I pulled mine out all the time.
What is it that you, that you're not seeing?
For the middle school.
The middle school math eight scores aren't on this version that, that's posted.
For the grade seven.
You go to the chart, yeah.
For, for all.
Oh, the percent.
Oh.
Yeah.
You bring it up again on the.
Middle school math, this one?
No, the, yeah, that chart, okay.
Yeah. Grade eight, seven, six.
Seventy-sixes.
So we went from seventy-one to seventy-six percent in math?
Yeah, from yours.
Eighth grade.
We talked about eighth grade, right here, right here.
Yes.
But it's not, um, this is.
We'll correct that and get that to you.
Yeah, the, the paper version is correct. The paper version in your binders is correct.
Page thirteen.
Okay.
Thirteen, fourteen. Thirteen, fourteen.
You okay?
Yeah.
Any questions on that part?
Yeah.
Okay.
The high school.
Our high school end-of-course data is as shown. And again, in reading and writing, we saw gains as well as in world history one, which was anticipated. Our areas of concern now, of course, are math. And I just shared with you as to why we think some of those things are. And of course, in planning for next school year, professional development and making sure that we work not only with teachers, building administrators and school counselors at the high school and middle school and elementary level to ensure that our students are properly placed and that we offer supports as needed, we'll continue to move forward. And again, in science, our concern here is biology. But again, when we think about placement and ensuring that kids are following the proper sequence as their course of study outlines, we anticipated that there may be a slight decline in that. And we will certainly work with Adrian and her staff with ensuring that our plan is implemented next school year.
Ms. Doyle?
A few weeks ago, we were given the textbook update. What subject matter is it that we're getting the new book in the next year's, was it science or history?
History.
History.
History and, um.
So do we need to take that into account? Cause I think when we heard that, they weren't necessarily gonna change the test. But we were teaching from a different book, but you were gonna align the curriculum.
Right, right now, we are.
Future.
Correct.
Right, for the future.
Aligning for the future.
Exactly.
So with history, what we do is crosswalk it. So at one year, we'll be teaching essentially two pieces of the curriculum, the old standards as well as the proposed new standards. And then they, one year, you have old standards assessed with SOL with probably about five or six field-tested items. And then the subsequent year, it'll be all. Bruce, when is that? I said, you wanna come up?
Remind us of those details.
Remind us what year?
Bruce is.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We're still waiting on clarification from the VDOE about what the future holds for social studies. All we know for sure right now is that this coming school year, we will still be administering SOL courses in these tested subject areas.
Using the, what textbook, our current or a new?
We're using new textbooks.
New, yeah.
Yes. And we have transitioned to new standards. But in, uh, the new curriculum that we are rolling out, NPS-created curriculum, we have accounted for everything under the old standards that could possibly be tested. So there are no gaps, uh, things that, content that might have disappeared or was scheduled to disappear. We've carried that over into the new curriculum. So uh, nothing is being missed in, in the instruction and the students are still being exposed to all of the content that they need in order to be successful on, on this coming year's test.
And I bring that point up to make the point that that further complicates this next year with the decline then in history this year. And then we're gonna introduce a new book and then the curriculum's old and new. And then it's unclear from VDOA, VDOA where we're going to be testing technically. So I just bring that up because that doesn't make the picture of history clear.
No, it doesn't. And so as, as, uh, Bruce had indicated when we did the textbook adoption, we're anticipating what's in the new standards. And yet staying true to the things we know students would be assessed to build a robust social studies um, pathway. But, but again, yeah, it's, it's up in the air.
Yeah. I just wanna make that point very clear, openly, publicly.
Yeah.
We're facing a challenge there.
We are.
Thank you, Bruce.
Dr. Rogers, uh, can you describe again, uh, your assessment of the world geography change?
The world geop, what we found the last couple of years was that world geography is traditionally a ninth grade course that students take. And Norfolk, we had that course offered to our higher achieving eighth grade students and some ninth grade students. This year, this past year was the first year that that, the expectation was set for sequencing, proper sequencing, so that kids could be successful in subsequent content areas. That all on-grade level ninth grade students would be scheduled to take world geography, which is more of a hands-on experience with science, um, excuse me, social studies or history. As typically, social studies can be, you know, pretty much rote memory and that kind of thing. Of course, now with documents and things of that nature, try to make history a little more, eh, interesting or rigorous for the ninth grade student. But in any event, with this being our inaugural course, if you will, for our ninth grade students, we had teachers who had never taught it before, who were given professional development and still have to develop a skill set in that. We have to find our gaps in terms of what we provide them in terms of professional development that's ongoing. The textbook companies have been great with providing us with options for professional development as part of our adoption process. And Bruce has been phenomenal with his team and making sure that we schedule ongoing professional development for those teachers. But essentially, it was a realignment of our sec, of course sequencing. We had some schools that were offering ninth grade an opportunity to take uh, different level courses, um, at that point in time, which just wasn't, uh, coherent or cohesive throughout the district. So this way, it's commensurate with our surrounding school districts with regards to the level of course that students take in history.
But it's a larger pool.
Yes.
It's a larger pool.
Larger pool.
It's a larger pool. And, and let me also put an elephant into the room. When we look at our algebra, uh, performance, though down a little bit, n- not as much. We recall last year, we spent a great deal of time in discussions about students who were identified as not being successful in certain courses, having schedules changed. And then, um, retaking the first semester or going into a different course for success. When we drill down further into this, you will see, we see very clearly the evidence of our commitment to limit those changes, to make sure that parents are fully in the loop. And it's not just a wholesale activity, though not illegal, though not inappropriate, and though done across the state. And so we also see the evidence of our commitment to addressing that that was perceived as creating, uh, unfair advantage to certain students. And therefore, you see the evidence through some of these data going forward.
Yeah, and I'm gonna come to you, Ms. Bussie, I would just recommend.
Exactly right. We have a larger number of students who are tested.
But I'll just recommend for the purposes of the presentation, cause this will live on, that may be updated with a footnote, so we can be clear on, you know, what's, what's behind it. Cause otherwise, you just pick it up and you see nineties for four years and then you see this drop, but it's really.
When we, when we get into the section, the story behind the numbers, some of that, but you're exactly right. And I think the other piece is when we do the final presentation to the board and we've taken our preliminary, we will certainly then create that indication there. Yeah.
And you, you addressed the part because I wanted to be clear that the cohorts aren't all the same because of that fact that.
Right.
Yeah. So that, that was, that was it.
Okay, thank you. A snapshot of the improvement, seventy-four percent of our schools showed improvement from last year or either maintained what they were at last year. In math, sixty-four percent of our schools meeting or exceeding the state benchmark of seventy percent. In history, we continue to do very well in that area as eighty-nine percent of our schools either met or exceeded the benchmark. And in science, which is an area of extreme focus for us next year, in addition to all others, of course, we had sixty-nine schools either meet or exceed the benchmark of seventy percent. With regards to our performance in ethnicity, and again, this is preliminary data, and in a subsequent meeting, we will certainly provide you additional detailed data. This gives you an idea of where we are with regards to our performance by ethnicity and race. And as you can see, in the subgroup areas depicted above, in front of you, we saw gains in all areas, two to three percentage points.
And, and that's like, we, we saw those gains. And when you see them pretty evenly distributed like that, it certainly identifies then what's the additional gap word. Too often, or often, you will see one group so far ahead or below everybody else in terms of the amount of growth. We see comparable growth across all areas. So that gives us the clear focus of what we do with the content and curriculum and the supports for students to be able to close those gaps sooner than later.
Okay, great.
And Dr. Boone, to your point, when we talk about closing gaps, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I, I thought also we were gonna measure according to our accountability report, military and.
Well, we are, but remember, these are preliminary data, so we're just doing a big snapshot.
Okay.
Because again, all of this is preliminary, not official public review.
Right.
So we didn't drill into every, we also have gifted in other students as part, English language learners. We just picked a, a racial subgroup.
Okay.
To show for today's.
In the October timeframe, that's when we'll get the additional breakdown. And then the, if I'm correct, the two years ties into the, in our accountability plan, we established the baseline.
Right.
Then that, this starts to begin to show us that baseline as we track the, that work.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly. And additionally, we saw increases in our students with disabilities population by three percentage points over the previous year in the area of reading performance. Economically disadvantaged, we saw an increase as well as with our English language learners.
Same thing. This is when you see, this, these two slides are the best example for all of these subgroups that we've identified today, that our curriculum is working. That an access to the curriculum is leading to the same level of growth. Now what we have to do is figure out, how do we, we did not figure out, pardon the language. What we have to do is continue our focus on accelerating growth for students or who aren't meeting expected benchmarks in terms of the, the overall percentage of students being successful. And addressing those gaps. And we get it that when we, in a few minutes, when we talk about the story behind the number, but that's when you get at your rigor piece. And then the system of support, so.
Dr. Robinson.
And my observation is, is as the earlier grades, um, become more proficient in literacy and numeracy, those should be translated into the upper elementary, middle school and high school. We'll see continued growth through tho- those levels because the kids that are there now came in not as strong as what we see at this time. So it's better foundation.
Exactly.
Thank you. Now I'd like to talk a little bit about, and Dr. Boone alluded to this early as we started having some discussion and eventually began talking about the.
Pause you for a moment.
Yes.
Just, just, can you all just call out, cause, uh, because the update is in the books, I'm focused on the book, whereas normally I would be focused this way, so.
Yeah, what's on the screen, what's being projected on the screen and what's in the book is accurate.
Right, but I'm just saying, just in terms of my visual, being able to see the board members, if you all have a question, just.
Yeah, sure.
Hell.
What's the story behind the numbers? And one of the things that we've been talking a lot about in addition to the data, the data is what it is and we all know that. However, there's always a story behind what happened or what attributed to the number, what great, what was great, what were the opportunities for improvement? And the graphic that you have before you is no secret. We've been talking about literacy, leadership and rigor all throughout the course of the year. Those are the three pieces that we've been focusing on all throughout the course of the school year. And if you recall, we had conversations about this idea of the district leadership team who began our heavy work in October and working with our district-wide turnaround partner, Focus Schools. And when we look at those three individual pieces, I wanna just direct your attention to some of the things that we've been doing. Last year, we talked a little bit about the book switch that we read as a district. If we are saying that literacy is important to us, then we feel very strongly as leaders that we have to model what we want our staff and our students to become. So we did begin our year with a book switch and we took the entire year and used that as a framework to guide lots of our professional development throughout the course of the year. This year, the book of choice is The Energy Bus. And we had a phenomenal experience two weeks ago, two weeks ago, with all of our district leaders, both in central office as well as in our schools. And I have to give kudos to Jackie Chavis and a team of educators that spanned the scope of not only central office staff, but building-level administrators, both principals and assistant principals, who designed and orchestrated a phenomenal two-day retreat in conjunction with Focus Schools, where we all started the time energized and we left energized. So before I go any further, I wanna give, just read one of the anecdotal pieces of information. After every professional development, we do a survey. And participants have an opportunity to write what they think. So I think, it's anonymous, but I think this is coming from a person who is not in academic affairs. And as I read some of them, I kinda got goosebumps because it lets me know that we were moving in the right direction. So here's an anecdote. It says, "While the strategies in this book align with my theory of leadership that I strive to put into practice with my team and department, I need reminders to check my energy. Our work is difficult and can be discouraging at times, but it's important work and the focus must always be on the children. Negativity can creep in and snag you before you know it. It's important to keep a pulse on my own self and the contribution that I make to my energy and the energy of others. I have a responsibility to keep it positive." And that's but one of, we probably got two-hundred-and-forty, uh, responses back from, uh, those who participated in that session. I'd be happy to share those within a subsequent meeting. But that for me was a testament to the work that we're doing and, and approaching it from a leadership perspective. So some of the things that we've been focusing on is collaborative leadership as a whole. An organization is only strong as its leaders. And we have, all our teams in our schools have instructional leadership teams. We have the division leadership team, which is referred to as the DLT. And we've been focusing on targeted professional development to develop the skill set of the leaders who are leading our buildings and our staff and focusing on leadership coach, present company included. And we think that that has attributed to our growth pedagogically and our skill set. And we will only continue to get better as we look at this work holistically and not individually. With literacy, of course, we focus. With literacy, of course, we focused on, focused on targeted professional development with an emphasis on the strategy of guided reading. And we've talked about that almost at every meeting where all of our elementary teachers had some experience with that. And we do have plans to make sure that we onboard our new teachers, our new staff. And we even had a meeting just this past week, and how do we catch our long-term subs up with this work that we're doing so we're not missing gaps with that? Planning collaboratively is where we come together and get the best ideas. And we ensure that rigor and the curriculum is being taught to the degree that we need to teach it. And then focusing on literacy coaching, one of the things that we did earlier was to revise the work of our reading specialists to ensure that they spent eighty percent of their time working directly with teachers in the beginning of the school year and twenty percent of their time working with students. And then they flipped that as part of a release model, if you will, with teachers. Their skillset grows and they have less need for that level of involvement from their literacy master in their buildings. And then, of course, this idea of rigor, which is often a nebulous term in educational world. But we spent those two days identifying what those three words meant to Norfolk Public Schools. And we're not finished with that work yet. We will certainly continue that as we begin this coming school year. I just wanted, Dr. Boone, you want to add anything?
I would just want to add a couple of thoughts. In the, the, the power of the leadership focus is not only building the capacity of individual designated leaders, whether central office administrators, coordinators, executive directors, but principals and assistant principals and others, department heads. But it's also that idea of distributed and shared leadership. And some may be saying, okay, we've heard that before. But I was just reading an article prior to coming to the board meeting that I'm going to be sharing with the district leadership team, done recently in ed leadership with Michael Fulon, who's a huge change agent in education and, and has written and researched a lot about that. But the idea of the distributed leadership of those people who we're asking to be on this journey with us for the work are part of understanding and crafting the work. And therefore, it begins to, to spread a, a lot sooner through a school building, uh, through a department than it would if just one single person is the only voice. And that's what we're seeing beginning to happen and talk about throughout this work. And I know this is the story behind the numbers, but this was also part of last year's story, even as we, uh, shared what happened in, in this year's Leadership Institute. One of the most powerful activities in the Leadership Institute was, nearly all of the schools had a poster session where they shared the story behind their numbers and their leadership to be able to bring their faculty and staff onboard with the idea of shared and distributive leadership and with the instructional leadership teams, how they got buy-in from their teachers and how now the teachers are taking and leading this work. Just as Dr. Rogers described, with Jackie Chavis being the, the spearhead for our Summer Leadership Institute, but she didn't keep it in central office. We brought school-based personnel in to help design and deliver the institute. And so that's when you begin to see that teacher voice, that, that administrative voice, and it's not just central office driving this bus.
Dr. Robinson?
This is something that I've been pushing for all the years I've been on the board, is this, uh, uh, leadership development. And when you look at Stephen Covey's work in, um, the Four Disciplines of Execution, that's the very first thing, is that you have to get buy-in. You have to get buy-in from everybody on, on your mission and your vision and then the accountability steps that go along. So I applaud you and, and encourage you to keep it up. And, and if you can do a, revisit it, the midterm, you know, at winter time, I would highly recommend it.
Absolutely. We have it all, we're mapping it out for the year.
Good. Good to hear.
Thank you. Out of the work from those two days, and to your point, Dr. Boone, and some of, reading some of the comments, there were members of other departments who wanted to do poster sessions too, to demonstrate the work and how it fits in with what we were trying to do. To Dr. Robinson's point about a mission or vision, the largest piece of the work or the product from the work that we did last year and moving on into this year is developing this idea or theory of action, which is essentially our promise to our community, to our students, to our staff, to each other, on what we will do to be successful. And there have been tears and professional conversations that have been literally knock-down dragouts over this paragraph. And when we shared it with some two hundred and fifty administrators a couple of weeks ago, that was no different. So this is still a work in progress. And I just had a conversation this morning with Carrie Purcell, who was helping us lead this work, with how do we, what are some things that we can do to begin this school year to continue where we left off? But I, you know, I don't typically read slides, but I will read this one for a little drama. Norfolk Public School students will be able to maximize their individual potential, develop skills for lifelong learning and become contributors to a global society because all personnel, and I'll emphasize all personnel, even though it's not bolded there, will support and provide exemplary teaching and learning opportunities in every school, in every classroom, every day, for every student, no exceptions. Now, as you can imagine, when you have a room full of leaders, two hundred and fifty of them, everybody has their own idea about what that paragraph should read. But I think we all left knowing that the gist of that paragraph represented what we'd like to see happen in Norfolk Public Schools. And we will certainly continue to work toward that theory of action and help let the theory of action shape the things that we will do in every department in Norfolk Public School. So it's tough work and it's long work and it doesn't happen overnight. And that was one of the things, my growth opportunity and being coached, is that I want to check it off and get it done. Let's make it happen. We know what we need to do. But this work is tough work and it's going to take some time in order to get where we're headed. So I'm looking forward to that.
One of the things-
I think Reverend Haywood, uh, when you, when you say, you know, I just, you know, I'm a Planet of the Apes guy, so when you said that, you know, that's what I thought of, that Caesar, so.
This, this sounds like a mission statement.
Yeah.
So you call in a theory of action, but, um, really is, is, would you consider this to be your mission statement now?
Well, we see this as being aligned to the mission statement that the board has already adopted. But how do we make it personal to the work that we do? And what will be our commitment? Because there's space between a mission and results. And this becomes our statement of what we commit to, to make Norfolk Public Schools actualize this mission. So this is our, if you will, our, our operational mission in terms of each and every day because it's important to bring instructional support into this conversation. It's easy to say, well, you know, I, facilities, what do I have to do with instruction? You have a critical piece in terms of the environment and thinking about what, what we're trying to accomplish as a district. You know, at the end of the day, the, the public report card is around student achievement. But there's so much that factors into student achievement. And we also are saying, as we discussed earlier, some of our, our subgroup demographic data, the idea is, how do we close those opportunity gaps and progress gaps for, for all students? This is our commitment. This is our very strong statement that we aren't leaving it to chance. This will be our way of going back and testing ourselves and checking in. Are we doing things that live up to this theory of action? And as Dr. Rogers said, we, we had this as an activity at the Leadership Institute, receive input from folks who are not part of the district leadership team. There may be a little tweaking that goes on with this, but to the board's mission and vision and expectations. All students, every school, you know, every classroom. And we're going to make it happen by the way in which we, we come together as a team to, to deliver on this. And so, yes, it's very closely aligned to the mission, but this is the team, team cheer, if you will. This is what we're going to do. When you ask, you know, over time, when you ask a facilities person or a bus driver, what are they responsible for? Improving student achievement is the goal that we're trying to meet. And they will be able to talk about how they get there. But I laughed and, and Dr. Rogers said it, it did take a long time. And, you know, there's always a debate between process and product. It's very easy to get to a product point and outcome and say, we declare victory. But it's difficult to, to have a process-
Oh, Bronny.
-that is sustainable, that leads to results that, that don't move every time the wind moves. Or every time the rain falls, it washes away. And so our process on this has been very deliberate, very intentional. The standing joke that I have with the district leadership team is, it took us so long to do this and my hair grew through the process. So, you know how sometimes doing sports, folks say, I won't cut my hair, won't shave or something until we go through the playoffs? Well, I kind of like it a little bit longer right now, so I'm not going to cut it. But my hair grew during this process. But this, this is, this is the theory, that if we do certain things, we can get certain results. And we're going to have to do these things for each and every child and each and every school.
Dr. Gabriel?
I'm, this is really exciting. It's, um, it's energizing. And just to kind of bring, um, some of the training that we did in Richmond, Mrs. Doyle had, had brought up how in her board meetings that they begin the meeting with a positive-
Safety story.
A, a saving story?
Safety story.
A safety story. And, um, and we have been talking as a board, um, during some of our, our board discussions about how are we going to, um, bring about some more attention on student achievement, recognizing students and staff members? And, um, when I go and visit schools, especially during the morning announcements, a lot of the students will say an oath that they have. Um, and honestly, if, when we are looking at, um, starting, um, the new school year, you know, September, if we want to incorporate this and say it, or have a student say it, or have one of us say it at the beginning of every meeting, um, I, I would, I think that might frame how we think our discussion. Um, because this is a very powerful statement. And, um, I think it puts us all into the mindset of why we're here and what our mission is, even though it's not technically mission, statement, but I really like it. I don't know what anybody else's thoughts are. We can have that discussion later, but.
Yeah, well, actually, I did the same thing as Reverend Haywood, because I pulled up the, the mission. Because when I read it, I said, wait a minute, that sounds just like what we have and, uh-
Well, the, the mission was used as part of this activity, so it wasn't different.
It's very similar.
But the debate I imagine that you all had, I remember is probably similar to when we were discussing the idea that every child would identify their dreams and live up to their potential. And we'd be going, you know, how do you measure it? What that is and what does it look like? But-
Sounds like you were in some of our meetings, huh?
I could feel it. I could feel it.
I, I was saying, I feel for the people who might have been on that strategic planning team and this.
And the DLT, but the, we grew through those conversations to get to this statement. And we grew in our understanding of where our place is in the work. And that was the goal with the Summer Leadership Institute, how does every individual find their place in the work? And, um, so like you said, the growth through the process was phenomenal in terms of what we're able to take away from it and how we utilize it. But if we don't have a, if we don't have a destination, then all roads will lead us there. This is, this is telling us where we're headed. And everything else tells us how we're going to get there.
All right.
So continue the story behind the numbers is to reiterate some of the work that we've done with our literacy division focus. And Gwen is not here today, but her, she and her team have done a phenomenal job in leading this idea of rallying the troops, if you will, around literacy. And they, of course, have the hashtag MPS Literacy, where they focus on strategic and authentic and on ga- engaged learners. Actualizing that work, I've already talked a little bit about redesigning the roles and responsibilities of the reading specialists and providing professional development for them every two weeks. And they in turn share that information that they've learned with their staff. What I do want to direct your attention to is how we partnered with experts in the field, with William &amp; Mary, are leading the work with our literacy information that we've gathered, gathered from all of our teachers. And I'll share a little bit more of that information here from a higher level. And of course, in a subsequent meeting, we'll provide you with some additional detailed data. Of course, we've partnered with Hope Mifflin-Harcourt to provide professional development and coaching that many of our schools took advantage of. And those schools that were strategic with how they had HMH come in and do coaching, saw some phenomenal gains this school year in the area of reading. And then, of course, we're partnering with the University of Virginia to give us feedback on our primary assessments. And we're also doing some work with them with the Virginia Kindergarten Readiness Program, which also assists with literacy as well. The professional development, and I don't want to reiterate that because we kind of talked about that ongoing with what we've done with PD for all of our teachers in grades K through eight. And we will continue that work with our high school folks next year. Ongoing classroom coaching appears to be something that all of our schools are asking for to help support the teachers in the classroom. And you heard Adrian come up and share a little bit about how they're providing coaching in science. So I think it's permeating across content areas and we're realizing that that's a beneficial opportunity whenever someone can show you what something is supposed to look like, it can be easily replicated. The overview of our work to date, of course, we have the partnership with MPS, uh, excuse me, with William &amp; Mary conducting our MPS Literacy Audit. They surveyed over nine hundred teachers and made over three hundred observations in our K-8 classrooms and gleaned some fantastic information. We have a meeting scheduled with them early next week to talk about the results and what our next steps are. They also conducted eleven focus groups, which was made up of principals and teachers across the district. We had a nice cross-section of schools to give us some good feedback on where we are with our literacy instruction. And some of the information that were shared in the focus group, whenever you have an opportunity to talk to people, you get, I think, more information than behind just a survey. So that gave us some good information to look at as we plan for the next school year. And they'll share that information with us next week. And we'll in turn share that information with the district and plan to provide you with a comprehensive update on where we are with the literacy model. But it's come along nicely. And again, the HMH coaching has taken place. We had ten elementary schools and six middle schools that took the bull by the horns with that coaching. And those schools that were strategic and purposeful with it, saw some fantastic gains that we'll show you by school at the subsequent meeting where we do a deeper data dive. The audit of the K-2 reading and writing assessment, they've given us feedback on what we have that will work in conjunction with the work that William &amp; Mary is doing. And we will continue our curriculum work to ensure that it is engaging and purposeful and meaningful and has all the components that we want it to have as indicated in the literacy audit. Do you have any questions about what we're doing with William &amp; Mary?
Yeah, with the reading specialists, you redesign their responsibilities. So in the future, when you hire a reading specialist, will they go through some training process? In other words, what were the reading specialists being trained for before?
For prior to, and I think they were being trained, but not strategically and purposefully. Gwynn Entertainment and Dr. Cataldo, in conjunction with Bart Erwin, designed a model where we were honing their skills as leaders. They were the experts in the building that were most qualified to teach reading. Therefore, we entrusted them to be able to do so, but we had to give them the tools with which to do so in a strategic manner. So they will, new reading specialists will receive similar training in that they will have professional development every two weeks, as we have been doing all last year, and be able to have that ongoing throughout the school year. And of course, the literacy team that's here will be able to find them support as needed as well.
Additionally, Reverend Haywood, the, the framework of the literacy model now gives us that, that focus. You know, when we shared with the board probably eighteen, nineteen months ago, that the work of the reading and math specialists varied by building. Some were using them very strategically, very effectively to support, uh, teaching and learning. And the math teachers were, teacher specialists had a lot of professional development. We built that in with the literacy piece. And so now, because we know, for example, we are focused on guided reading at those elementary levels, we are focused on the curriculum alignment and that piece of rigor. How do we make sure that we are teaching at the level that the standard- We are focused on the curriculum alignment and that piece of rigor, how do we make sure that we are teaching at the level that the standard would expect at the minimum? Not being representing the ceiling, but how are we connecting those pieces? So now we know what we should be focused on and using the data of each school based on student performance as well as identified teacher needs. And that's how we're getting specifically to to what's gonna be suppo- uh, provided for teachers and to make that work.
Ms. Seem?
So you had, you had mentioned that teachers were asking for the ongoing classroom coaching. How, how do you envision being able to provide that across all content areas?
And that's a conversation that we'll have as we plan for this coming school year and some contents it's needed more than in others. But that's certainly one that we are being strategic with how we plan for, particularly in the area of science.
Obviously, it's not a one for one. Teaching and coaching model. But how do we make relevance out of, for example, our beginning, our new teacher year-long orientation? I envision at some point, we'll break off and teachers who say, I need particular support in this content and if I'm teaching at elementary. Or I, I'm a middle school teacher teaching this content. And so we don't just keep them as the whole doing very similar things. Classroom management is always a a hot, hot topic for beginning teachers and they ask for that support. So what are the the mechanisms that we expand that coaching model across professional development to better support teachers too? And not just the one-on-one, obviously, the reading and math specialists are are who are in schools are there can do some of that one-on-one. The content coordinators and teacher specialists that that we have in place can support that also. But we're also looking at ways in which we can um, share the wealth and and broaden the access to what that coaching looks like. And to be able to come back, cuz what's effective in a coaching model is being able to come back and talk about what the lesson looked like. So if you're in beginning, new teacher orientation and you had a content focus on on teaching of something. And then how do teachers come back and talk about their success or their challenges in it? That's how, that's gonna be the benefit of coaching even within that paradigm.
Any questions?
Alright, as we look at branding this idea of literacy is important in Norfolk public schools, you may have seen this graphic on a T-shirt or in a classroom or in a school. And I just wanna remind the board that the read fourteen point two is a research-based thing. That says if students read fourteen point two minutes daily, then they are likely to score an eightieth percentile on the whatever standardized reading assessment that they may take. So we are really emphasizing that students have an opportunity to read either during the school or certainly after school to increase their achievement in reading. What are our next steps? To complete the current literacy audit results, and again, we're meeting with them next week to merge our literacy models and currently we have two separate ones. So that we have a pre-K twelve literacy model and actually, we more than likely will expand that scope into pre-K adult because we do have adult programs, literacy programs. To conduct professional development on our new literacy model that encompasses existing teachers, new teachers, as well as our long-term substitutes and how does that fit into the scope of this work? We'll continue our curriculum role work based on literacy committee guide committees that will be expanded from that. We'll also plan to provide our HMH training to our K eight teachers as well as our new teachers. And continue that HMH coaching that our schools seem to love so much from last year. And be purposeful and deliberate with our collaborative planning time and make sure that we have embedded professional development for our secondary English teachers. And if you recall from the data, our secondary English is doing really well, but what we found from the survey, and I don't wanna put the cart before the horse, is that. Those English teachers are asking for some job embedded professional development so that they can support struggling learners and reading. And then we'll certainly continue to build a capacity through our literacy leaders to Reverend Haywood's point, through focused professional development with our reading specialists. And our department chairs and building their capacity. Any questions about next steps?
Just on the uh, with the professional development uh, embedded or otherwise. Just remind me again how this ties back to the calendar we adopted and the professional development or in-service days that are in the calendar. Can you just ref- refresh me on how all that aligns?
The embedded professional development?
Just in general.
In general, the the district academic calendar and the PD days.
Well, the those district act, the district academic calendar is not different from what it was last year. What we mean by embedded professional development, for example, we have planning periods and some schools designated certain periods for planning and some for preparation. Those planning periods can be designed for collaboratively planning lessons and having conversations with our reading specialists and literacy coaches. To get an expected outcome from a lesson, so that's what we mean by embedded professional development, so we're not adding on additional time or days for teachers. Of course, opportunities are planned for that are not necessarily mandatory, but we do make available for personal development for.
But for the generally speaking, everybody's on the same page and.
Yes.
Right, so you recall there are two district-wide PD days prior to teachers actually being in school based on that Monday. So the twenty-second and twenty-third are district-wide days. And there's specific professional development that schools will be engaged in and some focus areas we have the district, Dr. Cataldo, you wanna add anything?
Professor.
In terms of what we'll be focusing on on those days and how we utilize those days.
Good afternoon, Dr. Boone, Mr. Jordan, members of the board. Um, for that, for the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, we'll be working with our senior coordinators. Their main jobs will be working with all of our teachers, so they'll be strategically placed at different schools and they'll be providing PD. Part of that PD will be the curriculum changes uh, from VDOE as well as any other additional things, some ongoing PD opportunities as well as working with different tools.
And I guess I was just just trying to get a feel from the the big picture of, you know, everybody rowing together. So you feel confident in terms of the, where the teachers are, where the associations are, where the calendar is, where.
Oh ye- oh yes, well, the associations just signed off on the MOU, so we're in a good place in terms of the professional development, what what we've, the discussions that we've had. The the commitments to planning time as part of that, as as Dr. Rogers was saying. In our memorandum of understanding with the teacher associations, there's a certain number of days that can be used for common planning or professional development versus that individual planning. And so we're, we we have that shared commitment of how we use time in order to do this and because the time is so focused. Obviously, each school has its own unique needs, given its own data, its 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 progress. And we we support that, there are times at schools, we've seen schools sharing resources, fiscal and other resources in order to maximize, two faculties will come together. And with a particular consultant or set of PD opportunities. So that they, again, you have those grades in schools that are sharing. So the the increased focus and alignment around this work is beginning to really drive how we use time. But as you said, the thirty-first, the teacher associations and the district signed off on the memorandum of understanding. In terms of working conditions and that piece that addresses professional development and planning, so we're in a good place.
Well, and additionally, Mr. Jordan, prior to our leaving for the school year, the last IOT meeting we had, schools had not had time to. Plan professional development, at least in skeletal in nature through December, if I'm not mistaken. So they had some time to do that to make sure it was aligned with the district and keeping an opportunity to share with other schools, uh, some of the professional development that would take place.
I just think it sounds like good news cuz it's just.
It is.
Something that we, you don't have to worry about, it doesn't nick at you and if everybody's on the same page and ready to roll up your sleeves and do the work. I think that's uh, very good from, you know, some experiences that I think we've had in the past.
The all-staff days, we really work with bringing the division plan and then as we have additional embedded professional development. We really work with the schools and their specific needs to make sure they're addressed, how we can support them best.
Thank you.
Dr. Boone mentioned earlier here is a slide that just gives you the dates of importance as it relates to our accountability information. As was shared earlier, it's anticipated middle of this month, a press release from the state as regards to state and division pass rates. And the federal accountability report appeals are due.
Well, what's important for the board is Sept- August fifteenth and September thirtieth will reflect the two times the data become public.
Right.
In detail. August fifteenth being state and division pass rates. September thirty- thirteenth would be the SOL state and federal ratings, so those would be the accreditation ratings for students. And then near September twenty-sixth would be the cohort graduation dropout. So we'll continue to support the school board's accountability plan and populate the official data once those become available. So I I, I agree with your assessment, Mr. Jordan, there's a lot of good news in there. A a lot of good news and I think this year reflects where we're beginning to see the stability in our practices. Begin to show some stability in results. We didn't have major slides as a district, we saw areas of increase and so, you know, the foundation is 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 getting firmer.
Which is a great, great segue to how things are changing, we talked about standards, but standards is almost an oxymoron as we think about the work that we have to do. As you very well know, there's conversation at VDOE about the idea of new accreditation standards and the profile of a graduate. Dr. Boone has alluded to that several times, so as we plan for two thousand seventeen eighteen, next this coming, this school year we're in and beyond. We need to think about how we approach it from the work that we're currently doing. And VDOE listened and they found that students, parents, the community felt that the manner in which we measured student success may not have been the best approach. So they're looking at it from a holistic standpoint with these five tenants in mind, citizenship, critical thinking, creative thinking, collaboration and communication, the five Cs. As an outcome of some conversations with business leaders, higher ed and the workforce. But the profile of Virginia graduate does include those things and will certainly change and we'll find out more information uh, next school year as it relates to that. And I just kinda shared that, so I'll move on. So what are the unintended outcomes of the current accountability system? I think it's important that we rationalize or understand the why behind the change, otherwise it's just change for change sakes. We have a list of failing schools paralleled by poverty and this is coming directly from the Virginia Department of Education, more specifically Dr. Staples. In a CERN meeting that we attended in late June. The sanctions demoralized the community and staff when there was obvious gains that often went uncelebrated, not necessarily in Norfolk, but just in the state as a whole. High-quality staff refusing to work in failing schools or identified as failing schools and not necessarily looking at the growth that they may have seen from one year to the next. Testing predominantly dominating the school day and year, and as was shared earlier, we do have some skill, schools that still do skill and drill, test prep. Whereas the new way in which the SOLs are designed using TEI items is not, does not lend itself to skill and drill, test prep. Teachers reverting to that drill and skill methodology and not using best practices to teach. Non-testing subjects being pushed out of the school day, we talked a little bit about that today with science. Parent-community backlash and being against testing, so those are some of the things that prompted the conversation about revamping the accountability system in Virginia. And we just wanted to give you an opportunity to have an overall picture of where the state is going, which is in keeping of what we've been paying attention to student growth. The current system measure is SOL achievement and GCI graduation completion, completion index, all or nothing. The new system proposes a matrix that measures student achievement and progress. Student group performance, absenteeism, chronic absenteeism, not only graduation completion, but the dropout rate as well as college career and civic readiness. And that hasn't been completely and totally identified as the other pieces are, as you'll see in a minute, but that's, it's coming.
Can I just draw one parallel to the advanced work that the Norfolk School Board has done with its accountability plan? When you look at the proposed matrix in terms of multiple measures of student achievement and school progress. We've spent time talking about the SOL achievement and progress, student group performance, that's something we have in there. Absent, truancy and absenteeism is part of our school board accountability plan, graduation and dropout rate and the college career and civic readiness. And so in a lot of ways, this school board has been ahead of, or at least in concert with the state. In our own conversations as it relates to how do we show progress and in multiple measures and not just the one accreditation ra- rating. So I I thought it was important to really draw that parallel between the work that has been underway with this board for over a year and now what's emerging through the state.
What I noticed this absent is the English as a second language pro- um, students and progress, is that, is that captured in there?
Student group performance, it would be under that, so.
Absolutely.
Those students would be there, our military students, the, I'm not sure if the state is gonna include a performance ratings for gifted students, but our board has it in the accountability plan. So all of those would be part of of that story.
Correct. Uh, Gabe?
State, we're specifically talking about the Board of Education.
Yes.
Yes.
And is, do they have a timeframe as to when they're going to adopt this?
Yes, I'll share that.
Okay.
They're working.
Hearing is coming up as well.
I'm sorry?
Hearing on August ninth.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So this is a high level, the performance levels are level one, level two, level three, either you add, near or below standard and those are the designations that will be there. Accredited, accredited with conditions, accreditation denied. If you notice from accredited, all indicators are level one or level two. The delineation of how many you can have at level one or level two, um, I don't wanna speak publicly about that, but I do have a document that I just got today that further explains that and I'll share a little bit about that in a minute.
It's coming forward, but I think what makes sense, we no longer have six to eight or whatever number of accreditation options. And you all have heard me say any, any number of times that you either fully or not based on the the way in which the current system works. As this one still has its challenges and as the board receives input from the public on it, we'll see if there are any additional tweaks. But I think again, you're beginning to see the board acknowledge that the model that they had doesn't necessarily profile growth. In terms of a school's progress and that's a a big focus that they have for themselves is to make sure that growth is validated through this work.
Can I ask a question about accreditation designations? Accredited with conditions, any indicators in level three?
So that would mean if a school has three or four of the standards, well.
Yeah.
Fast forward, there you go.
Fast forward is exactly what you're speaking of, so these are the indicators, so you have combined rate for English reading, sorry, math. Pass rate for science, achievement and achievement gaps uh, in English reading and writing and as well as in math. And then I'll go to the next slide, you have the GCI, graduation, the dropout rate, chronic absenteeism and then the college and career readiness, Mr. Watts, fast forward a minute.
Quite conceivably then to your question, Ms. Doyle, you could have a school that has a combination of level one and level two, but is level three in one particular area.
Right.
We anticipate that those conditions would be one of the things that you need to do in order to move that area out of a level three standard and and performance level. So that then you are accredited. And the conditions are gonna be contingent upon what happens, what are the areas in level three and what are the things that you're gonna have to do? I I eagerly await what the conditions. I eagerly await what the conditions represent.
Yeah, right.
Because it's very easy for the state to slide back into this compliance model. And we know the current model of school improvement is pretty much a check-the-box compliance model, even though everything that's in their school improvement model is research-based, is the theory of what it takes to turn around schools and everything else. But the application of it is driven by a compliance model. So that's the devil that's in the details on that one that we're not clear on.
Are they still going to allow you to average out three years? Or is it a single-year measure?
I think you get to average out three years, and I also think you get to reduce by ten percent. Whereas in previous years, that has not always been the case for the state, if I'm not mistaken, but for federal accountability.
So with level one and two and three, though, they're not really measuring a whole lot of progress efforts.
Yes, they are, they are. And I think this slide will help with that, this one. So if you look at level one, for example, with reading, seventy-five percent higher is the benchmark that we have set now, which is all another, either you made or you did not. Whereas here in level two, if you have schools who have student performance levels between sixty-six and seventy-four percent, which in many of our instances we would currently, we would have schools operating at a level two. Whereas if you look at the criteria for accredited, you could have all indicators being at a level one or a level two, which would mean that they would be accredited.
They're close enough. So there's that, there's that piece in terms of growth and progress.
Right, exactly. Whereas sixty-five percent or lower would deem that school as a level three, which would make them not, if that helps. So it's a little, it takes growth into accountability right now. The same thing holds true for the graduation completion rate, the dropout rate, absenteeism, and college and career readiness. I did read that the college and career readiness indicator would not go into effect in the same year that the others would, but that will be coming.
That's coming down there.
And I think, again, when you look at the achievement gap piece for English writing, reading, and math, I'm still concerned, and I, the challenge in this is getting to all groups. That's the opportunity. I think the problem in this is if, how do you measure growth in these achievement gap pieces? We get it in some of the other areas, but these areas of achievement gaps really don't take into account growth because it's a fixed model. So if you're less than ten points below the state benchmark, then you become a level two. If you're ten or more points below the state benchmark, but suppose you've grown fifteen percentage points in that, so this is my concern area in the achievement gap piece.
That was my point earlier, exactly.
Right, so above that achievement gap piece, you get some flexibility if you're close to it. But once you get into the subgroups, the challenge, I think, even for the state, and they've looked at performance data over time to see if, well, if we applied this model to last year's data, how many schools would fall where and what would that look like? And so I think there's still some more work that has to be done in that.
Have we applied this model to our current?
No, no, we haven't had an opportunity to do that yet. But I mean, obviously, if we just go back several slides and we look at where we are in terms of the state benchmark, the seventy-five percent, and where we know certain subgroups are in the thirties, the fifties, the sixties. So we wouldn't necessarily meet that. My core question for the state has been and will continue to be, how does growth factor into this if you have that fixed model?
Right, would be mine too, yeah, right.
Right. So the timeline for implementation for this, this is a transition year. Schools may use either accreditation criteria, my understanding. And we can provide clarification on that at a subsequent meeting.
That'll probably come out when those September ratings come out.
Two thousand eighteen nineteen, the new accreditation matrix will be applied, matrix will be applied with the exception of the college and career ready indicator. And then in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, the college, career, and civic ready indicator will be applied. And as Mr. Jordan shared, there is a meeting in Virginia Beach on August ninth at six-thirty. To, it's at a high school.
It's at ODC, at Old Donation Center.
Oh, is it? Okay.
At six-thirty.
State board vote is September on this. So again, they will receive written and public comment and verbal comment. One thing that has surprised me is the number of superintendents who really push back on the chronic absenteeism standard. I found that surprising. And I think, again, it's the idea of true urban districts where we have, for a long time, have had a focus on chronic absenteeism. But at state meetings and everything else, the pushback from many superintendents on the chronic absenteeism has been surprising to me. They feel that's something they don't control and therefore.
Is, is, okay, so someone, either you, Dr. Boone, or Rodney, said that there are letters or feedback that's going to be accepted?
Yeah, it's out for public comment, so the state will receive either way you want to provide it.
Is the division itself going to write something in support of this? Or have you already personally spoken with them? Do you want us to speak or write a letter?
I think it's important for boards as well as superintendents and others. We hadn't decided yet exactly how we're going to weigh in. Had the opportunity to have some face time yesterday with former state board chair, now board member, state board member, Dr. Billy Kennedy. And so shared some thoughts relative to that. And, but we'll make sure that the Norfolk voice is heard.
Okay. What is the reason behind the exception of college and career readiness and putting that off later?
How are you going to measure it?
Yeah.
And what, how are you going to measure it? What are you asking districts to put in place? If part of this is about internships, externships, community, whatever, then folks have to build into the capacity to be successful on that.
Well, and this just dictates our need to really move on that career pathway center even more so, right?
We have the same struggle. I mean, as we were going through the accountability plan, we had that same discussion about how do you, as students leave and go out into career or workforce or college, how do we get information back that allows us to feed back to our, to our system? But the, you know, aside from the CTE school, the work readiness skills and all of that is embedded in the CTE work throughout the division, you know, already. So I know they work on that, work on that hard. But I agree that CTE school is an important piece of it.
Yeah, it's a greater imperative even more so.
Absolutely. Just, you know, I appreciate the, first of all, I appreciate the presentation and.
My pleasure.
I like seeing sheets with lots of green on it. That, I think that should be applauded. And as Dr. Boone said earlier, I think it's good to see the stability and starting to see the growth. I know we'll continue to push for acceleration, but it just, it's a different feel, it just seems. And so I think if we keep, keep pushing forward, we can, we can get there. And for the staff, if you don't know, you know, the board also is Red Switch. And Dr. Boone gave us copies of the energy bus. So we'll be reading that as well. So we're, we're part of the team and we're with you. And following along, on the piece with the state and the whole accreditation thing, I still personally struggle with the, in one sense, I'm glad that we do measures of schools. But, you know, I still look at individual students. I mean, if you are a student who's meeting all the benchmarks and you're at a non-accredited school, or if you're at a fully accredited school and you're one of the twenty percent or twenty-five percent who's not making, I mean, I think we still have to find ways of focusing on the success of each individual child, even though we know we have to talk about these things because the state requires us to talk about it.
And thus our theory of action for the district leaders and our work. Because absent that, we could very easily be comfortable and complacent with what the state has said. Because even when you look at the achievement gap pieces, they say based on seventy percent, the state benchmark is seventy-five percent or higher. Well, the state benchmark still says it's okay for twenty-five percent of the students not to make it, and we declare that school to be successful. The story is who are the twenty-five percent that aren't being successful? And it varies from school to school and district to district. And so I appreciate our accountability to plan paired with the mission and our theory of action that it's about all children getting to that benchmark. And we aren't limiting them by any artificial number and declaring victory. I mean, there were several board members yesterday, Mr. Jordan, Reverend Hayward, Ms. Basing, at the Equity Conference and that, the Region Two Equity Conference. And that's that theme about how do you make sure that all children are part of the conversation and the planning for the work and moving toward those results that every child deserves.
Dr. Robson?
I agree with you unquestioningly about each child, every child needs to succeed. But it is nice to see the numbers go up because that means more children are succeeding.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
And after seeing previous year's scores, this is very heartwarming that we're moving in the right direction. Until we get hundreds across the entire, entire line, our mission isn't finished.
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I didn't put a question slide up because I figured we'd have a conversation about it.
All right, everybody good? Anybody need a few-minute break before we go to the next piece?
I do.
Okay, let's break for about five minutes and then we'll come back and proceed.
Okay.